Committee of the whole meeting for October 23rd at 1:00 P. M. We respectfully acknowledge that the land in which we gather is the unceded traditional territory of the Shipwreck Nick. Approval of the agenda recommendation that the committee of the whole meeting agenda for October 23rd, 2024 be approved as circulated. Counselor Bushel, Counselor Evans, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Adoption of the minutes recommendation at the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on October 9th, 2024 be adopted. Counselor Beach, Counselor Rich, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go into delegations and today we have replacing Sergeant Murray McNeil is Corporal Andrew McLean. Andrew, you're up. Yay, welcome.
Thank you for coming. Very helpful. Let me start off with the second. I'll start off with item number one there. I contribute to our safe roads. This regards to traffic violations, statistics and I know statistic is just a stat. So one ticket is one stat. So in July, we had 93 violation tickets issued in August, we had 122 and September, we had 145, bringing us to a total of 364 for this quarterly report, which is up substantially from, let's scroll down a little bit more. From 160 in the previous year for that time. And that is contributing to our resources. It's lots of power. So having a little bit of power out on the roads and having the ability to take an extra time to do traffic enforcement has led to extra violation tickets being issued. And I'll note to that, our goals were, and we're seeking to have 10 violation tickets per member issued. And right now we have five. At that time, we had five full-time members working, so that gave us an average of 50 per quarter. So per month, so 150, so we're well exceeding for our goal this. And I'll make note that all those 360, 23 of those were for excessive speed. And successive speed or threshold we kind of go with is at least 45 kilometers an hour over the speed limit. And as you probably saw on this community release, I got that one card in 202. Most of these shots, so we're getting those excessive speeders traveling through. And some of it is over on the four lane Malacca and some of it is through town getting by the green road. Those areas are coming across the bridge there by Silver Stand Road. So it's all everywhere and for us to slow the traffic down and enforce as much as we can. Second item with regards to the safe road to move on to is impaired driving. So that includes media roadside prohibitions. And that includes 90 day prohibitions, 40 day prohibitions depending on their impairment levels. And 215s, which is a 24-hour driving prohibition. And that, so that 215s are from both alcohol and drugs. So in July, we had a total of 12, August, we had a total of 19, September, a total of seven, for a total of 38 impaired drivers for the quarter. That is up substantially from 2023 where we had five errors for that quarter. Again, it's, it could be a little bit more with more officers to be able to observe violation, road violations that leads to traffic stops, that leads to catching impaired drivers. And the third part of that, I'll say honestly is because of muscle. So large majority of those are muscle force that he is for us, for everyone on the road. He is like a veteran, he's mission for us. If he catches them and it's good on him. So all of those are impaired alcohol with the exception of four lanes being impaired by drug. Next, we'll move on to collisions. So during that quarter, this quarter, we had two injury collisions. The first one in July was a single motorcycle collision in 97A. So a former driver failed to negotiate her into therapy needs transported to Vernon Hospital, everybody injuries, but not like therapy. The second, on July 2nd, driver of an SUV went off the road in the lawn of Tim Hortons after failing to negotiate the car. Minor injuries to passengers there. The other one I'm going to mention that Sergeant McNeil forgot to put on when I talked on the pivot was the fatal truck collision we had on the Brook Bridge and that was on August 24th. So I just want to speak a little bit in regards to that one. Obviously, we had close dealings with government ministry and with environments about them as well because of the fuel spill on the contaminants into the river. They were, governments consulted on that one. And also there was a dive team come in with insurance company and they worked hard through two nights and they went in and they used sleds and drug out all the debris that was left on the bottom of the river. So that the debris field underneath beside the bridge where the sending and all the cargo landing was fully all cleaned up and removed from there. Next, we'll move on to break and enters. Three break and enters, August 11th, Center Road Road, residents broken into how there was left a law. They went through the front door of the doggy door. And a bunch of items were stolen from that residence. We were able to recover a bunch of those items down at the Snow Vale Trailhead. So a bunch of those items will return to the property owner. The second, two there around August 13th, and that's down on Carson's Road in Mara. A residence was broken into, doors here and first was stolen. Those credit cards were then used at the Mara Foodliner, which led to video and the suspect interrupted. Also had warrants for the arrest. Like a bunch of new charges that have been made also all of them are where he went from three cell mail. So that one can send a bunch of charges and it is currently in custody at this time. The second one there in Carson's Road, where the tools were stolen, it's related. It all happened. So that person is still in custody. Theft of vehicles. So we had a side by side stolen from a property up in Chris, um, at the Star, so that's near the Narrows Village on July 12th. That side by side was later recovered at a property just outside of our boundary areas in Perry River there. So on August 6th, there was a pickup truck stolen from a residence and recovered down the block damage. Truck opened, that's why they weren't able to take it any further as your turn to the owner. And then on August 9th, a dirt bike was stolen from Carson's Road. And we believe that stems back to the same person that was involved on that 13. That dirt bike was recovered. That collaboration files between us and the rearers. It was good work on that. Linking a bunch of that stuff together. Then on August 15th, there was a motorist scooter stolen in Sycamore Sphere. The keys were left in the tent, that scooter was not recovered. During traffic, on July 5th, a traffic stop resulted in the arrest of a 37-year-old female here from in the town. And there was a allergic allergy of drugs seized during that arrest. There have been charges sent forward to current council for charges of possession of persons trafficking. And then on July 14th, a truck was stopped, transferring the highway near Malacca Road where drugs and cats seized. And then I guess the other one, which has a lot of, a lot of the attention around here was on August 16th. Danny Servio was arrested in Sycamore Sphere by Southeast District person who made your crimes in it. After the murder of Uncle Wayne Servio, he still is currently in custody on file and waiting for. Next page there shows kind of the statistics of 23 between 2023 and 24, same four. Everything has stayed relatively the same. With the exception of impaired driving and excessive speeders. Our calls for service. For this quarter, we had 686 calls for service. Last year at the same quarter, it's 698. So it's relatively close, but if we look back at 2022, 2021, grew up probably 50 calls. So there is a little bit of a number trend. Calls for service in the state was the touch. Next, we'll look down to resources. So currently, Constable Poitras is still off duty, recovered from his injuries from his motorcycle collision in May. We have a new recruit, Jason Warby, just graduated depot this week. He is starting Monday, October 28th. So he'll be a recruit here at the Sycamore Detachment, Constable Miller will be training him. So for the first six months, he'll be partnered up with Constable Miller and be training with him and then go on his own. So that's definitely bolstering our resource a little bit with Constable Piper retiring in September. So it was 19 loan years for him here, 43-year career. So he's been well-known in the community, good or bad, but he's spent a lot of time with those shifts here. So as far as our resources, we have, because we're down to four sergeant corporal to constables right now. We've been supplementing our detachment resources with overtime from all kinds of detachments. Majority of it's coming from Rebel Stalk Seminary and Open Organ, but we've had numbers coming from lower mainland detachments all over coming up and working shifts. We have reservist members coming on working four by day blocks. And we also have the provincial support team, which is based out of Kemlum. They've been sending at our request, sending members in there for like eight days in a row. So we've been able to keep our staffing levels to what we need to, to provide hopefully to the appropriate levels of service. With the help of a lot of people around, so we appreciate the help of the departments. Some criminal code charges. Fourth of July 15th and July 23rd, we had flight form police and prohibited driving. Those were the, was the same person that has been charged in both those files. And that's in the court process now. On July 24th, it's all the weapons filed. And on August 19th, stolen property, possession of stolen car, failed to violate probation, absolutely in the driver's seat. So that is what Sergeant McNeil has prepared here this afternoon. Any questions?
Andrew, thank you very much, appreciate that. Good on Justin, he's, he's out there continually. I see him on, especially in front of Tim Horton where those big trucks are and we've had a problem there. So he's always take out right there ticketing them. So I am glad that he's, he's chasing that. So just in regards to staff, how many members do we generally normally have here?
Six.
And right now we have four?
That's correct.
And with the new hire, sorry, the new hire brings it up to four?
Five.
Or brings them up to five, okay. So you're still looking.
First couple of months, as far as the field training, you don't count theoretically as a small person because they have to ride and be under the drug supervision of their spouse. So the whole process takes about six months to complete, where he's considered on his own. But after two months, then they can help us back up and get help out in the other area.
Excellent. Congratulations to Piper. He's, I wondered if he was ever gonna retire. But anyway, no, that's great for him. Counsel, Counselor Beach.
Thank you, you're the chair. Want to thank you for, for all the work and, and monitoring and everything that you do. I have a question, I just need some clarity because we've been looking at, several of us as counselors have been looking at some dangers that we think exist with heightened traffic coming along 97 at Capel. And one of the things that has come up is what signage that's posted can be enforced and what can't be, is a warning that can't be enforced and the color of the signage has been brought forward. I just want to clarify, while you're here in front of all of us, it, we thought white was enforceable, it could be followed upon and people could actually be reprimanded and, or, and yeah. Yellow is just a warning, is that correct? Is that understanding correct?
So the white signs, so obviously we have the ones, say if you're coming into 50 zone, the arrow indicating that you're, you have a speed reduction ahead.
Yeah.
And then this one that has the sign that says the maximum and that is the actual speed limit.
Okay.
And that is what we use as enforcement.
Right.
So if you were to, if I had to say where the sign was posted so that I can verify that it's there. The yellow signs, like if you're coming up to that sharp corner, well there turning, that is a recommended speed for that corner. It is not enforceable ticket where I can say you've been driving slower than that. The only time that could come into effect is if they were saying winter time, slippery road conditions, even though the speed limit may be 50. But if they're going too fast for weather conditions, a ticket could be issued for speed relative to the conditions. Because you as the driver are supposed to slow down and drive a speed relative to what the road conditions are.
Okay, thank you.
Any follow-up, Pam?
Counsel Rich. Through the chair, thank you guys again. I mean, I love that the numbers are up, that's, it just means the community's safer. So really appreciate that. With, just kind of follow up with Pam is what does orange mean? And has MOTI, like is everybody reaching out and working together? Because I know, hopefully the bridge is not as closed that much. But when, when we have to do 97A and then across up through Notch Hill that way, 97B, there, you know, I mean, there's big concerns and, and that back road goes up and down. And just concerns about, you know, weather and the road being, and I know MOTI is doing what they can. Have they reached out to you and are you guys all working as a team now to see how this is going to work? Or we're just going to kind of do a watch and shoot?
So we are working with the project company for group grid construction. And we have started process of having meetings with them in regards to what it's, how that's kind of look. And part of that is access for emergency vehicles, acquire and place for getting access through the construction area towards the Gulf Forest, those different roads during the construction process. When they have detours and closures, we would still have access as so we are in active conversation with them about that. As far as signage and speed on highway, fortunately, I don't have any control over that. That's if it, that is on them, we can enforce it, but we can't place the signs and stuff. But if there is areas of issues, then we can definitely bring that up to them and say, okay, maybe it needs to be slower, maybe we need to move that speed sign back a little bit before they turn orange or whatever the issue is.
And what does orange mean?
Orange means it's a cautionary sign.
It's a cautionary also, okay, awesome, thank you so much. Yes, Bushel.
You're the chair, thank you. Andrew, thanks for everything you and your team does for Sycamore, so appreciate all the efforts. Couple of questions, first one, I work on Highway 97. I just noticed that since they started the paving, a rash of ambulances and, and, you know, police going out that way a lot, like it's abnormal that I hear so many, you know, every day I seem like you hear ambulances going out that way. Is there anything, like is it because the barriers aren't on there or is there accidents along there or do you know anything?
No, we have not, since they started the construction 97A, we've had no legions, we've had no incidents out there. So it could be just ambulance.
Or more ambulances than police.
As far as police calls, I can't off the top of my head think of anything that serious that happened.
I just seem to have normal loss of syringe. Another question, it kind of goes with what Siobhan was saying, is speeding in town. I know I've kind of always, you know, the flashing signs that warn you that you're going too fast? I mean, maybe, maybe highways would help by, for the construction stage of the highway until the, you know, until the four lane is done, the bridge is done. Maybe putting some of those as you come into town to slow, slow people down. I know I slow down a lot, I seem like I slowed down a lot more for those. I mean, the, you kind of go through the signs, your signs just kind of, kind of, you know, but the flashing signs really seem to slow people down. So I, I don't know if that's a recommendation that maybe highways would be interested in doing for the community while, while the construction is going on.
Definitely. Constable, I know in one conversation with the county, I remember it's the bike sign was back in the spring. They were looking at some photos there, especially coming in with a truck stop there slowing down, they have some truck stop.
Great, thank you.
Awesome, anyone else? Andrew, thank you for the presentation and yeah, thanks for your, all you guys do for us in Sycamore, so we appreciate it. You're very welcome. Here's Sycamore, communities in bloom, Deb, take it away.
So I think some of you are aware, but we received the results of our evaluation for this year. And just to clarify again, we did not do the full five category evaluations. So we were not looking, or we were not eligible to reinstate term or retain our five blue status. But of the three categories that we were evaluated on, we hit the 82% or better mark on all of them, which is the five blue levels. So that was heritage, environment and floral displays. So very good evaluation. We received a special mention for the work we are doing to build a stronger inclusive year-round community. So the theme, as I had presented to you guys previously for this year, was activating our previous year's project spaces for a healthy community environment. So we focused on the farmers market and with the, some of like the nutrition programs and, and things we're doing with that. And also with health and wellness programs in the community. So they, in addition, well, actually, maybe I should just explain something. I wrote this last thing, but we won our 2024 returning recipient of the Environmental Action Award for the District's Sycamore for the Province. As I said, with all three categories, we did well, but with the, our theme of activating and healthy spaces and so a healthy human environment, they were very impressed with our submission and with our showcase submission we did, thanks to Captain Sarah's help. So they also commented specifically on our advocacy efforts with the invasive mussels. And then our biofuel and our countertop compost program. So, but one of the things they really commented on was they were just so impressed with how clean the community is. They said, you know, like it, they were just really blown away about how clean we keep our community. So I guess going forward, I, for 2025, I'm recommending that we do not enter the evaluated category in either of the three categories or the five categories. Honestly, it's, it's a lot of work. And I think it is really important that we stay part of the Communities in Bloom program. But in the absence of somebody else to take over for me on dealing with the judges and the submissions and such, is just, it is not, I can't make it a priority. It would, this year was a little bit overwhelming, but the Communities in Bloom, the pickleball, the bungee vest and the farmer's market. It was just a little too much. So, but I think it is very important we stay part of the program. I think we benefit greatly from it, not only in terms of the exposure, but, you know, this may sound a little silly, but I think we, we've done very well. Like when I go to businesses and I'm talking about working with them, which I would absolutely continue to do, having the Communities in Bloom kind of banner as a part of, you know, like I'm just in, keep walking up the street and telling you what to do. It, it makes a big difference. So the businesses seem to really get that the Communities in Bloom is an important program and, and that they support it and contribute to it. So I would really like to continue on the showcase project with, and I've talked to Daryl about this. I would really like Communities in Bloom to be part of the team for dealing with the healing centered gardens. And I envision that being our showcase project for 2025. I, honestly, the judges had suggested that we might even, with the healing center and with some of the health programs I was talking about with like Laura Noble and, you know, working with the seniors and such, that we might have wanted to make that our showcase project for this year. But I really felt that it was more important to wait until we actually had a healing center and we have the garden center. I think that that would make a fabulous showcase project. In addition, I'm, you know, happy to keep working with Daryl and identifying, we've talked a little bit about things we can do with the community garden. I, I really enjoy working with Daryl and the staff and everybody. And I think that it's, we're a good team. And I think that the showcase projects and continuing to have the supportive communities in Bloom and us supporting them is just, it's a win-win. So I guess the one other thing I, I did want to mention is I really want to give a shout out to Daryl and the staff above the, the tell us lot. It's been a thorn in my side for an awful long time. And it's gone from being, you know, an unsightly horrible lot to being something that is actually a real good accessory to the, the fish and ball courts in terms of us having someplace to sit and set up and, and do things. So I just, you know, we work together and I, I just think there's all sorts of good things that come out of it. So I don't know if you guys, any other questions or, or what your thoughts are. I am happy to continue to be part of the evaluated category if somebody else could, you know, like, and I will mentor them, but I just can't do that with everything else on my plate right now, so.
Understandable. Deb, thank you so much, thank you for all you do for our community. And Daryl, to you and your team too, to hear that, thank you to, to the staff as well. But Deb, you do, you do, you go over and above the call of duty here, so thank you so much for that.
Counselor Rich. Through the chair, yeah, huge shout out to you and volunteers, like it's crazy the amount we do. And again, shout out to Daryl and PW, like being mentioned for how clean we are and stuff. And I know, you know, I see everybody out working all the time, but that's huge when that's, that's noted. And being compared to other communities. So again, please send that back out to, to the people that are actually on the streets doing it. Appreciate it. Yeah, so when I was reading through your report, I saw succession plan and I panicked. So just wanted to get it on record. So just wanted to get it on record that you're staying for a while. You haven't won the lottery and you're not moving to Costa Rica.
So I, I think the judges, just because sitting with them and, and working with them, they knew that, you know, I was doing the farmer's work and all these other things. So I think they're kind of highlighting that they would love, and you know what? Don't get me wrong, I love Communities in Bloom, but they would love us to continue to be part of the evaluated category. It's, they're a little thin in that area these days, but you know, it's just, I, I don't see it being a huge benefit to Sycamore. I would like to really work on high-value projects for the community. To me, that's what it's always been about. And we got through that first part that gave us that five blues. And now we're just focusing on things we can do to make the community better for us. And still want to insert, incidentally, they've got some stats that way.
And just not on Communities in Bloom, but I do want to put a shout out to Pickleball, who donated five hundred dollars to the Eagle River High School for paddles. And the kids, we got thirty new paddles and the kids are all becoming pickleball fanatics too, which is a little bit scary, but it's becoming just a massive hit where at lunchtime and they're all, everybody's into pickleball, I haven't got the bug yet. But yeah, we really appreciate, and, and again, you are a cornerstone on, on getting that going for us. And it's huge, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beach.
Through the chair. Deb, I, I can't express how much this means to this community. It's just, and the work that you've done is just outstanding. I don't know how you kept it up as much as you have. So I, I just, I want to assure you that there has also been discussion with our First Nations, our splat sheen about the health center and the landscaping and the gar- the gardens there, they are very interested in making sure that everything that goes in there is going to be, it's, it's going to be meaningful to their, to their culture as well, so.
That's, that's perfect.
That's a great partnership, I just want to, yeah. So thank you so much though for, for all the hard work and the creative ideas, wonderful.
Counselor Bushel.
Through the chair. Deb, Deb can't say enough about all the work you do and, and the public working, public works. And you do a great, great, great job for the community and on behalf of the community and council and staff. Thank you very much.
Thanks Deb, I think you've, you've raised the bar for the community and I think the community wants to, I feel like they want to stay above the bar and, and continue their work with your leadership as well. But thank you so much for everything.
And I will be giving this back to Diana to put up at the front, so.
Perfect, excellent, thank you. Okay, so Department Updates, Finance Department Quarterly Update. I'm gonna assume that's.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Anderson, members of council. Unfortunately, our Chief Financial Officer is unable to attend, but in her place I will attempt to do her good. So the report is presented to council for information purposes. It captures the first nine months of this year. In terms of revenues, like property taxation, collections have been very good. We're in around that nine, ten percent, which is pretty common for municipalities. All of our granting revenue is on track. Overall, licenses, penalties, investment income, everything from that funding purpose, right? Our budget was eight point five, we're sitting at about seven point nine, so we're on track to meet our targets from revenue. In terms of the expenditures, our budget was eight point five million and we're sitting at five point two. Some of the departments have costs that are incurred later on in the year, which involves capital in some of those projects, but everything is pretty much on track. If I can speak to the capital budget, I think that's where everybody would be curious about. In terms of general government, so the health center, our budget's seven point seven, we're sitting at three point seven, fifty-one percent left. So daycare, we were at a hundred thousand, we've expensed out at twenty. There was a motion of council to allocate the additional eighty thousand dollars, which takes us to our full budget. Some housing, you know, small amount, thirty was the budget, fourteen, we're on track. There's some parks, recreation and events expenses. The pump track came in, our expenses in the first nine months was just under five hundred thousand, our budget was five fifty. So that's not, not out of the extraordinary. The mountain bike park paths and, and trails to be determined. Some of these items may be deferred to twenty-twenty-five if they're not expensed out. Transportation services, the Riverside project, we've expensed out just under one hundred and fifty thousand of the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar project. So there'll be progress claims coming in, that's why that's right now is low. So don't, it's no surprise when it gets higher. And as far as the rich costs at eight twenty-eight, we're sitting at zero now. We anticipate the cost will be, those expenses will be forthcoming. Other studies like baby storm work, spruce, road stability assessment, you know, those are to be determined. Protective services, we've got twenty-two thousand expensed out for training props. The twenty-foot trailer was in at ten, the budget was eight, we're just over there a bit. And the engine five came in at three ninety-three where the budget was four hundred and ten thousand. Waterworks, Capella Riverside main upsizing, so money's coming in, expenditures coming in for that. And the sewer service, right now we haven't gotten around to the well lift station. The lift station upgrades, budget was two hundred thousand, we're sitting at about a hundred and twelve thousand. And water, wastewater treatment plant upgrade, budget was fifty-seven thousand, we expensed out twenty-six. So overall, with the twelve million dollar budget, we've expensed out five point five, about fifty-seven percent of capital projects expensed out. If you have any questions.
Council, any questions?
I don't know if that's good or bad.
I don't know.
For Bianca, I wonder if there would be which.
I don't know. And it's only going to be good or bad.
Counselor Beach.
Yeah.
Yes.
The, the eight, the eight thousand on the bridge cost? Was that eight thousand two hundred and eighty or was?
Eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand.
Eight hundred and twenty-eight?
Transportation service for the subscription.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that, which one is that? Are we talking Brun Bridge or pedestrian bridge or what are we talking?
Oh, the bridge over, over the river.
Oh, the bridge over South Squad.
Yeah, that is correct.
I just wanted to clarify which bridge, there's a few bridges.
We don't have a, yeah, no.
On a project. Yeah, okay. All right, that's South Squad, all right.
We all good? Yeah. Well, move on. Discussion item, Sycamore's Fire Department, Sycamore's Fire Rescue Budget. I don't see Lorenzo here, so, oh, sorry, sir.
Through the chair, I was just gonna state if we can, say if we can, or suggest if we could move to the next item until his arrival.
We can, and you know what? The next item is you.
Oh, yay.
Twenty-twenty-five.
Counselor, maybe it's.
Okay, this is a fun one. We're just bringing this forward for council's eyes on it. We've determined the dates for the twenty-twenty-five council meetings. And so that's the second and fourth Wednesday of every month with Committee of the Whole beginning at one P M. And the regular meetings starting at three, which gives council the opportunity to move in camera with the public portion beginning at five P M. And so some years we have, we wanted to, because of the date of when the Southern Interior Local Government Administration Convention occurs, but it's not a problem this year, so we just have the following dates. And one meeting scheduled in September due to the M U B C Municipalities Convention. And, and again, in December, that will offer exposure for Christmas. And so we're hoping that we can have council's blessing as we're going to advertise per the requirements of the community charter to the public.
Thanks, Sarah, any questions from council, any concerns? Sorry, it's, oh, sorry. Sorry, just, I thought you went. Colleen, don't be rushing.
Counselor, on your behalf.
Yes, obviously. Okay, so we're good with this? Sarah, do you need any direction? Hey, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna carry on, I don't see Lorenzo yet, which the next one is Shushua Tourism. And last week I was in CSRD meetings and Cow and this year, this, this week, here we are. We're getting into that budgeting time where we need to discuss where we're going to cut some corners, where we're going to put some money. So I just wanted to bring this to council, just to put it on your radar because we are going into budgeting. So we do have Carly now here, who looks after Act Dev and Tourism for us here in the District of Sycamore. So I just wanted to highlight that, just so that we can start putting some thought into it before we go into our financial discussions as well. Counselor Rich.
Through the chair, do you know what we pay?
I do, it's forty thousand.
Counselor Bushel.
Yeah, through the chair, do we know why Simon Apple done tourism, Shushua, just recently?
I think they as well have a tourist, it's, it's a lot of money to duplicate process.
Yeah.
Like, so.
Yeah, myself.
It's a preference, I guess.
I think it's a, it's something we are duplicated up on in all levels. And I think we really should, when we get into budget or even before budget, really have a discussion with Act Dev and Tourism, Shushua and Chamber and Travel Info and, and just have a really good look at it, that's what I think before budget season.
Absolutely, Carly will definitely be part of this conversation before we, you know, make any decisions. But I'm not sure as to the contract ever, if I recall correctly, when we pulled out of the Act Dev, Shushua Act Dev, it was a year's notice. So it may, I'm not sure of the contract, but it may be the same contract where we still participate this year. If whatever council's appetite is, and it may take a year or two, but I'm not sure we have to have a look at the contract because I don't know that portion rates. Okay, any more questions? So we'll just put that on our radars and, okay, excellent, all right. And we're going to move on to Fire Department. You, I do not even get a sit-down because you are party.
My apologies for, I had a double book to me in there, first responder for the Brun Bridge, my apologies.
No worries, no worries.
So.
You're on.
You're on, you have a presentation up? Right. So I know that the three questions here are regarding the future and what we're hoping to accomplish in the fire rescue. Thanks, I appreciate it. So this budget presentation, what I'd really like to outline is the, the future. And what I want to do is reference what I had shared here six months ago when I came, and that was the overall strategic plan for the department. I've now, now been just over six months and I've had an opportunity to really dissect and have a look at the, what the department has been doing as a business, operationally, emergencies, and where we, where we currently are and hopefully where we will be. With that, the discussion is focusing on the ten oh one, which is the minimum criteria to be a firefighter, and that's overall firefighter, interior, exterior, rescue, everything. We have the ability in Sycamore's with our leadership, training officers, myself, of actually focusing on bottlenecking that trading from beginning to end in between six to nine months. We haven't really, really clearly defined it yet, but we can do it around that range. And what it does is it gives people the opportunity to understand the culture of the fire department, pain of command, and each component that is part of those ten oh one criteria. So with everything that I start with, with, with our firefighters, I always go through our values and I share that with them because it's a great reference that we jump off for the department also. And obviously, community safety, when you look at the priority chart, there's a lot of expectations there. And when I look at it, it just gives me a lot more fuel to understanding that strategic plan that I put in place six months ago. And well, it's been refined now because there are other challenges and limitations that have been recognized. So those are the eight objectives of the strategic plan that I started with. Really what we're looking at right now is the number four, the programs and services. And I'm gonna touch on that. And the big thing is, is the succession planning and the services. So of course, I'm looking at the next five years in twenty-twenty-five. And right now, as I mentioned, ten oh one is that rounded minimum standard. So what that means is nobody should be going into a live fire. Nobody should be going into a rescue, nobody should be going into any form of peril in an emergency without this as their backbone and their reference. And when I first came in, we had a limit, not, I don't want to say limited, but we had a, we had a select group of people that had their ten oh one and something that we could build on from there. Moving forward, if this is, if the budget is approved, we could have almost every single member that we currently have now, this time next year, ten oh one, and build from that. The ten oh one is important because it covers, it covers risk analysis, it covers inspections, which we know that there is a, there's a need for, prevention in general, it covers a lot of things that we realize there are holes and, and, well, opportunities also for us to look at as, as emergency services. The other part besides fire prevention is emergency response service. So we, we want to refine exactly what that looks like. Maran Mountain this year, it was an eye-opener, I think, for all of us. What was our role, what were our limitations? And could we expect to interface? So that means the wildland coming into Sycamore's proper, where, where are those lines? Where are we actually attacking this fire or meeting it? Or meeting it with B C wildfire services? So there's a lot of questions. The good news is, and I think if you had followed us on social media or, or my three thousand emails, we were prepared, we were prepared to interact, we were prepared to have a protection within hours, once we knew that we were possibly facing, and no one knew at that time, the encroachment of Maran Mountain Fire. So which, that brings me into the future services. We would really like to see a wildfire component that we could introduce also to the academy. So a structured firefighter academy, which would get everyone to the ten oh one, but we see that a need for wildfire protection, and that's a whole nother discipline. They're really not that similar. Structured firefighting is, in short, it's compartmentalized inside and you're trapped. You now have to interface with that fire in that building. Wildfire, it's, it can come from anywhere at any time and you now have to have an emergency escape plan for every situation. We can share stories with you from wildfire firefighters and they're, they're just as heroic as our structured firefighters, really perilous work. So of course, overall with that strategic plan, I'm looking at resource allocation, analysis and options and those strategic investments. And what I mean by that is what we have now as far as rescue and as far as services and advancing and creating more opportunities from that. So the big thing that we have implemented right away, which has So the big thing that we have implemented right away, which has really turned us around as an organization is uh, that leadership development through our command structure. Command structure is solid, solid now. There were questions about what exactly an officer does, what exactly uh, are the responsibilities and roles. And we now share all those responsibilities and roles, and it's, I'm very proud of the work that our men and women have put into it because I can't do alone as a fire chief, it's impossible. And that was something that I shared with the crew right away, that um, uh, if we're going to progress, if we're going to be a progressive fire department, uh, we really have, need to have an understanding of our risks, uh, our limitations and, and our challenges and grow from there immediately. And the response has been amazing, people have stepped up. Uh, integration of services, so sort of things that we may be looking at in the future, uh, taking on different, possibly different services. Right now, that's in the future and uh, but we're aiming to gain all potential types of services. So the big thing here is, is that succession plan. That, as I mentioned, NFPA ten oh one is that bare minimum, but without that minimum, I can't develop my future leaders of the fire department. And I know when I first came here, um, people were concerned that I didn't immediately live in Sicamous. And that people wanted that fire chief chair, I, I understand that. I'm in a, ultimately an administrative role. I'm part of planning, development, organizational structure, but I do respond to calls, obviously. What I would like to see is my replacement from here, what I would like to see is my replacement from our ranks. Because we have talented people, but I have to give them that training. And I have to give them the opportunity to be in command, and I have to give them uh, the time and space to grow because my job is not just responding, it's a lot of other things. And uh, that's something that's developed over a long, long time. So I want to be able to enable and empower our crew now because they have stepped up and they, they know that eventually, well, I, I'll be going to be replaced like everybody else and why should the next person come from here? So that's the importance of the academy is developing our own culture, our own training and making it strong. Making it part of who we are as our history and, and the future. And really uh, abiding to that organizational structure. Uh, that is something that, excuse me. I missed a slide. Uh, that is something that will now gives us a roadmap and, and a plan to um, really move forward that everybody can see. There's no, there's nothing to mystify there, it's very clear. The expectations are clear. The needs of the, the Sicamous are clear, our neighboring uh, communities, it's very clear, we know what we're facing. We just have to come up with plans and, and contingency plans. And as a longtime firefighter, the redundancy of those, I have to have backup, have one backup. Because that's your expectation out of me, that's what you want out of me, and that's what I want to deliver. So that's the big thing is, is as much as, excuse me, the uh, academy um, is something fair for you because it's focused on bottlenecking people from the beginning to the end. We will benefit from it because we will have, uh, we will be whole. Instead of right before what was practiced was, we would have thirty members and two would be at a certain level when they're ten oh one, and a couple have not even started and a couple um, were near the end. So everybody is discombobulated, it was all over the place, and it just didn't make any financial sense, safety sense, so many things, so. This is something that I feel strongly will benefit us because it'll give us a template for the future. And we can probably hold an academy once a year as we have new members. And they will be up to a standard and they will again be the future of Sicamous fire rescue. So what we've developed is um, a plan and what it looks like. And we will continue to go through Vieira if it's approved. Vieira is the system that we use now, it's ten oh one approved. It's, it's a certified, approved or certified um, organization, which is, which is huge because it's it, it helps with any form of liability uh, and an understanding of the standard, the minimum standard for firefighting and rescue. So we, we're developing ideas on how to get the word out uh, and how to share the plan. And for those people that are currently members, to get them prepared for it. Um, and what we're ultimate, what we're looking for is the, to, to have that highly trained emergency service personnel, especially in a community like Sicamous. And what we need is to have the training uh, tailored to us. So we have, and I don't have to tell you all this, but we have highway, we have water, we have wildfire, we have so many potential risks that we, we're, we're at an opportunity here to really identify what our rescue service looks like, and that's exciting, it's an exciting opportunity. Um, we're looking at improved response times, we want to be cost effective. And on top of that too, with our neighboring uh, fire departments and, and rescue, we want to build strong communities with them. Uh, the other part is the consistency and availability and, and what I mean by that is, it's, this is, this is a product. And the, you will see the product, if you had a chance to come to our open house, where you're able to come by the fire department, product is buy-in and the structure and the seriousness that people take their roles in this community. Uh, our, our firefighters give up a lot of free time away from things that they love, things that they need to do. They do it with the strong belief of the service that they're providing and if there is one thing that I can tell you that I'm proud of, of being the Sicamous fire chief, it's that. That is the, the thing that I'm so proud of our, of our staff, of our paid on call and our, and our leadership, so. Um, part of it also is we can either develop, not only local firefighters, but instructors, we want to do the train the trainer thing. And we want to grow on that. So to be cost effective, we have our incredible training ground, which we used last night for our first live fire. Uh, training for the year, which probably doesn't sound very exciting to you, but it's something I absolutely loved. It was fantastic, we got a really good evolution in, we did a ladder rescue and uh, I'll tell you, this training facility, we're going to be using it a lot this winter, this fall and this winter, is fantastic. We can do so much for our firefighters for command, for uh, ten oh one, for everything. And what I really like to see in the future is our neighboring uh, smaller towns possibly use it uh, with us when they need to do their ten oh ones, or when they need to certify people in, in a, in a herd. Or if they just need to get some of the rest out, so we're looking at that as an option too. The other option, of course, is we are part of um, the Shushua regional fire training uh, and seminar, which is for bigger scale, larger, larger operations, something that we hope to utilize. Um, especially when it comes to a, a multi-agency, big scale calls. That is a perfect space to use and it's uh, we, we, we are invested in it and we will use it um, when the opportunity comes up. But more often than not, we will be right here in town. Uh, so as you're aware, there, there are really good features at that, at our training center that mimic um, a two-story apartment or a single family home or other things, so we're able to imagine a lot of different scenarios. So the training programs, basically what it looks like is your ten oh one, as I mentioned, is your basic firefighting. Then there's advanced fire suppression for things like um, electric vehicles, uh, plants, large plants, uh, large structures. Then we have, when you're slowly becoming a officer, you, you need to specialize in something, and you have your choice. So right now, our specialties look like ice rescue, swift water and hazardous material. And I put wild, wildland firefighting because it's something we did last year and something I think we will need to practice more often. And then fire prevention and safety education, this is a big, a, a big component. I'm really hoping um, that we will advance on our fire backlog beginning of this year and, and complete it next year. And that's going to be a big part of it because that public education is going to really help our citizens. So uh, as I close here, we're looking at just a very short and sweet campaign, if it's approved for people that are interested, people that are maybe new to Sicamous, that want to be part of the fire department, that these are the options that you could have. You can come in as an entry level, once approved through our vetting process of of uh, going through applications and, and everything else, that we will slowly introduce you and we will have a plan for you. If you're going to live here and invest here in Sicamous and, and we have people that have, that have done that, that have come to our fire hall and say, we're moving here, I really want to be part of this, then it's, it's great, we have a plan for them. And part of that plan is hopefully, if approved, the fire academy and we can grow from that. Uh, we also have as part of the, uh, the campaign is to show people how to apply the minimum um, uh, acceptance standards and other important uh, information. So looking ahead, jumping off from the uh, fire academy, where we want to also from that expand training programs, that specialized training, uh, we want to offer more opportunities for community involvement. Uh, things like our, our open house, uh, was an agreement, it was very successful, it was a warm thing, it was um, it was, it was a good jumping off point, we want to do more things like that. Uh, building partnerships with other fire departments and organizations, so. Uh, that is something big for us because I'm slowly realizing that we haven't talked enough with our neighbors, with rescued, with uh, partnering agencies. So we're looking at hopefully having something once a month. I might be a lot and I think big ask, but something that we can do so we all make sure that we're touching base with one another. So part of um, part of the hope for the academy approval is looking at in the future of a wildfire rescue academy, so. The wildfire rescue academy um, is much more cost effective because there is, there is no ten oh one standard to say that would normally take you, if you went to the academy, three to six months. This can be done in a pretty short time and we can pool the current firefighters that we have. Or this can be an attractive too for people that just want to do wildfire because they don't always miss. So this is something that we're hoping to develop. Um, what I found interesting in my research is in February twenty twenty four, uh, a pool showed that three out of four can support the idea of a national firefighting force. I would love to see this and I would love to be, I would love to see Sicamous be. I'm waiting for that. Um, and this is just an idea right now, but being surrounded and being where we are, I really want to have a wildfire fighting force ready to go right now. I want BC wildfire to be aware that we can, at, at very minimum, get eyes on Mar mountain and have some reconnaissance and report back. Because as you noticed over the summer, a lot of communications I was waiting on, you were waiting on. And I vetted it because I didn't want it to be improper or, or too late or too early and, and it took a lot of time. And as, as we all know, you see wildfire services, they're on their own agenda and they, they have their checks and balances also, so this is something that I want to work with at BC wildfire. But uh, uh, what it would do is give us consistency and availability, availability for immediate wildfire response. And I feel strongly that we need that here, even if it's a small team, doesn't have to be a robust team. So this is something for the future, uh, uh, for a fire academy, structural, fire academy wildfire that I think we would benefit from. Um, so in conclusion, um, it's, the, the six months that I've, I've, I've been here, I've seen the need for, like I mentioned, certain things. And, 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 and my expectation is to deliver to the district and visitors um, a level of service that uh, is second to none really. Uh, my expectation is that I will give the district and, and, and visitors something that they never have to think about as far as, I wonder how they're going to do. You can come and see us, you can come and watch us train, you can come and meet the leadership. But this is what we've developed now as an organization, we just, we don't just want to meet the minimum standard, we want to like last night, went over it, we want to show you the mastery of what we can do. Uh, and, and we're, we're already on the road there, very confident. Uh, so anyway, I, and I apologize for being like. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Lorenzo, great presentation and don't, no need to apologize, we got a lot done while we were waiting for you. But um, how many members, how many volunteers do you have?
Right now, we're at twenty five. And we have a strong leadership core, finally, which is something that I was focused on, I think, when I mentioned when I first got on. So the, both, those leaderships are the deputy senior captains and lieutenants, and we're forming an officer pool, so what that means is those senior members that have their ten oh one uh, are now giving the opportunity to take small chunks of leadership roles. Because we need to think about coverage uh, for when I'm off or the deputies off, and they have to be at the level that we're at, not lower, they have to be as, as proficient as us or higher for, for coverage and for protection.
Thank you. I've heard um, some great comments and I've talked to some of the guys and they're you know, the level of excitement and professionalism has, has really, um, the bar has been raised and they are pretty pumped and um, um, proud to serve and definitely for their volunteer. Um, and you know, we are a growing community, to your point and program, we are a growing community. We have, you know, if Old Town Bay um, it approves and moves forward, that is, that's a lot of, of homes and, and um, residents out there with Old Town Bay Road, for Old Town Road. Um, and also you look at Temple and the seniors facility and we're just, we are a growing community, so. Absolutely right, our fire department needs to rise to the standards that we require for a growing community, so. Um, hats off to you and thank you, uh, thanks for the presentation. Councilor Beach.
To the chair. Yeah, I, I'm just uh, really impressed, I mean, it went to the open house and that was great, I hope you were happy with, with the turnout, there seemed to be lots of interest and, and um, just listening to sort of the plans, I agree, you know, with the mayor, we are growing. But what I also see and I'm so pleased to hear is, is the enthusiasm for being ready now ahead for wildfire, because this is going to be something that will be will just, will be very necessary and it'll, it'll, it'll be a leadership for this community and for you, and so I'm really, really pleased to hear, hear that uh, component being stressed so much. So thank you, thank you for, you know, taking it on and really looking forward to all of the bigger picture of our challenges here. And it's exciting, I, I, it is really exciting.
And just to echo what Councilor Beach just said, and meanwhile, fires are a new normal, right? I mean, that's, they're not going away, so for us to be more prepared all the time and, and learning is, it's really important to save a community. Councilor Evans and Councilor Rich.
Thanks, Chief, for doing a good job and stepping it up. I, I'm so excited about that training facility. That's a really great improvement. How many, if I may ask a question, how many um, How many, if I may ask a question, how many um of our twenty five have the ten oh one?
Uh right now, it's the leadership core plus one uh one person in the in the officer pool is down to one component and he's done. Um so the the number would be four, four and almost six because actually two two have two tests to do and then they're done. So currently it's four and that's not including myself. So that you you can see that the margin is it's not quite there compared to our twenty five.
Councilor Rich.
To the chair, thank you for everything you're doing. It was, it's great to see you guys out and about lots. Um question, is there funding? Because we are kind of a, a unique, Sicamous is so unique with with water and the highways and our growth growth and our wildfires. Is there grants and funding, can we get more money from you guys besides from our taxpayers?
Yeah, we we've looked into that uh myself and Bianca and there are more opportunities, I think, than we were aware of originally. So we we were just approved a grant three weeks ago, which is significant for us because our turnout here is uh it's it's just about done. So uh you know, and and that's something that we will continue to do, especially through uh B C Wildfire Service. Uh you know, last year, every year, you can see that they're strained, but the communication that we have with them is they they encourage um communities and uh and especially like us to be selfless, reliant, self sustainable to a point, right? So I I need to uh have a dialogue with them to see exactly what the parameters are. And if we do create something like a wildfire um uh academy, my dream is to get them to fund it and to get their instructors possibly to come to Sicamous. Or we'll send them to San Arum and get those stamps, which through the CSRD, we do have certain courses, uh Fire Boss and stuff like that. But I think it's okay for us to ask for some additional help and grant, especially when we share with them our plan. I think they'd be excited to know that it's one less thing for them to um not to worry about, but to to know that they will have bare minimum have reconnaissance. They will have firsthand information, it's one less flight for the helicopter that day. And you know how much helicopters cost to run, it's it's crazy, three thousand dollars an hour or something, I can't remember exactly what it is. But so yeah, that's a conversation that we can have and and explore.
Excellent, thank you. Where did you?
Yes, Rosal. She's the chair. Uh Lorenzo, thank you very much, you and your team and uh for everything you do for the community. And I like the, you know, the professionalism that you brought to the community from the coast and and yeah, and I said on the the open house, I you really see it in the in the in team and the staff around. They're uh, you know, the volunteer firemen, they're pretty pumped and be proud. Looks, the place looks really good and you guys are really doing a great job. I had a couple of things, um um we were planning on having a tour, an F uh forestry service road tour. Uh that's been kind of pushed back, so we're hoping to maybe get that fired up before the snow flies and still, and it'd be great to have you on that tour as well.
Yeah.
And uh so that was a, that was one, I liked the new rig that you guys uh uh got outfitted there and had a good tour of the rig.
Uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it was really, and yeah, and uh and I like what you're, you were, you know, you did with the uh the demo and the and uh and also the, you had uh Eagle Valley Rescue Society there doing a, doing some work too. So you guys did a great job and uh it was kind of cool, kind of see everybody working together. Um is there any possible way uh you could also touch base with the railway and and see if they have any kind of, do they have anything for for communities along the railway, like hazmat trading or any kind of equipment, you know, um equipment that you could actually access or have on hand in case uh we do have a spill of some sort with the railway?
Yeah, so last uh, I want to say March, no, uh. Was it May? It was May, yeah, we we did a big operation with them through the CSRD and we um we uh have new relationships now and communication. So the great thing is, is that the railway companies um that that use the, that come through the community all have H R V As, very strong hazardous vulnerability analysis and plans in place. And we are part of that and through the CSRD. So there was training last month, I didn't have an opportunity to go to campus, but there's always opportunities where they encourage and they put on, if you had a a chance to see their operation last May, it was pretty significant. It was a full scale operation and I thought they did an exceptional job because we really had a good understanding of if there is a spill, uh derailment, uh what our roles will be. And that they they have, they will have people coming in by throes to to help patrol uh any kind of big scale spill or even small scale spill. They'll they'll treat everything um a- as important as as anything because what they don't know till we know is treat everything as big scale. So yeah, I was I was really impressed by that and I continue to have conversations with uh uh with the rail companies to uh and all the training that they offer is free.
Mm hmm.
Uh and it's and it's high level, it's high level training. So so yeah, what I'd like to do is begin to have my officers involved, not just myself, because it it could be somebody else in charge one day and and it's important for them to know. So we'll take advantage of every bit of training that they uh. Are you ready to answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, you betcha. And just one, one question that I had and and I see Kelly's in the gallery. Uh the uh I know we, Kelly did a presentation a while back about, you know, wrapping up this society or turning it over. Have you guys had conversations or have you had plans to uh take on rescue? Or I know we we talked about it, but I haven't heard anything for a while.
Yeah, we we can continue to have conversations and we're, right now, we have open dialogue and are are looking at the possibility uh of uh of amalgamating that service taken on, whichever way we'd like to put it. So the conversations continue on. Uh we we are meeting in, I think, next week sometime, we've already met a couple of times and so there is discussions there.
Excellent. Um you you can end a little bit with public input.
Okay.
Okay, so just, yeah, I am, and just to, for when you did the training with the um um the railroad, our C M SARS was a big part of that too. So all of our emergency responders and our C M P, so everyone is is, we're learning, we're getting better, we're literally getting better, so.
It was a big scale, really big scale.
Yeah. All right, Lorenzo, thank you so much. Okay.
Nice job.
Okay, we're gonna go into um council reports and we'll have public input right after that. So um Councilor Evans.
Just uh privileged to be part of uh lunch with Splat Scene Council and via the early years fair meetings and um lunch at the Haven yesterday with a bunch of enthusiastic seniors and a chili and hot dogs and uh and some kind of delicious dessert. And uh yeah, it was good to hang out with the seniors. Um I have had conversations with some folks in the business community that uh are excited about the new projects happening as well as, I like it when folks can just stop and talk to you, that's a good thing about Sicamous and uh and address their concerns. One guy phoned me this morning, we talked for a while. Um I just, I love that open communication that can happen on a real tight basis, so it's good.
Excellent, good, thank you, Councilor Rich.
Oh, I counseled a council with Splat Scene and that was a uh great meeting. Uh did the fire department open house, voted um and uh got a tour from my my cave of the curling ring, so that was kind of neat too. I spent some time in there, but I never actually looked around, so uh yeah, that was good.
Excellent, Councilor Bushel.
To the chair, uh we had our planning development meeting there last week. Um few zoning amendment requests from the Yarmulay Group and uh we had six, seven, five Old Town Road, the Kylos properties uh uh present as well. And we also had a temporary use uh request from Northern Court from the Yarmulay Group. Uh attended the open house at the fire department, that was exciting. Um also the council, the council meeting. I had a site tour with E C Dev on site at Two Mile with the owner, uh Grayson Weir, and I guess that's about it.
Excellent, thank you. Councilor Beach.
Um yeah, I I um had uh attended council to council meeting with Splat Scene and lunch, which was wonderful. Prior to that, I'd actually been to uh an invasive species workshop out in Scotch Creek at Adams Provincial Park, um and that was very informative. Um a number of things, what I would really like to say is that um between the last uh council meeting and this this one, um Councilor Rich, um Councilor McKay and myself uh did a site visit out of District Four Safety Issues uh at Capel uh at at Capitol and and ninety seven highway. And um it was interesting, there are a lot of observations were made about lack of, lack of signage. Uh the recognition that uh semi trailer trucks are are always parking along that straight stretch and they're not supposed to be. There were, you know, sort of lack of enforceable signs and of course, the question that I clarified on what were warnings, um what were warning signs and what were enforceable. So a lot of issues came up and um I just want to say that one of the things that got me even looking at that corner was that I now live on Capitol and tried to cross the highway, uh had tried to cross the highway at um at Capitol in ninety seven and had an incident where no one was hurt, but it just scared the living daylights out of me with pedestrians coming off of the walking trail um and trying to get through heavy traffic when you're watching it all coming. So I I think what we agreed on and made points on were the safety issues that were there, that it that it is a bit of a an octopus like the one at the other end, but maybe not as big. And it's a blind corner and um we noted that the the signage just isn't really great for the the danger of that, especially traveling um north on ninety seven. So I'm gonna, you know, I I'm gonna hand this to the R C M P uh and see and get their comments on it as well. Um I just took notes and 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 everybody sort of noted things down and yeah, it's it's something that I think, you know, we may have left it a little late to get any change, obviously, at this point, no turning lanes there, nothing uh is visible with the new asphalt surface, but um I think it needs to be public record. And um I know we've had no deaths at that corner, but it, the potential for for an accident, a serious accident and perhaps a fatality is ever more present because of the the roadwork and the bridge work and everything. So we we just want to record it and so it it will be and and it'll be brought to the R C M P's attention as well. So that's my report.
Wow, thanks, Cam, that was really good. Okay, I went to uh, I'll be really quick, I was at the October sixteenth C S R D Cow and October seventeenth, the C S R D Board. Um items that are coming up right now are, you know, basically budget items, so everybody is is looking to the budget to make sure that they are um reviewing their finances and um on task. There was a presentation and shout out to to Bob Evans. Um there was a presentation from the Okanagan um library and, you know, we're so, we have so much technology now that we forget how important the library actually is. Like it is such a, I don't know, it is, it's so important to our community and um and the one that we have here, I mean, with Jamie, we knew Jamie and uh just the library itself, they do a great job. So it was a really, really good presentation, so thank you for sitting on that board. Um council, the council meeting, our last, I think, Monday. Um we won't get into, I won't get into details on that until the minutes are are published, but we do have um um the name of the um Sicamous Health Center. It will be Sicamous, Sicamous Health Center. So uh we're getting closer to closer to nailing down the name for the uh for our new healthcare center, which looks absolutely amazing and uh every day it's it's changing. The Legion Poppy Campaign kicked off yesterday, so, or sorry, it's kicking off Friday. So um please get your poppies. Um highway resurfacing on ninety seven and there is a lot of action and activity in and around Sicamous. So be extra careful and um watching out for um even the um the construction, uh the sign sign people because they're at every corner as well and trying to stop people. It was, you're going down ninety seven and they're at the Legacy at Grand View at at Capel. There's a lot of them and it's really, really busy and a lot of activity. So just a heads up for everyone. Um just a a moment, we lost a Centurion, Ally Graham, the last week. So just um thoughts, our thoughts go to uh to our family. Um next week, there's a an AIM meeting and a Broom Bridge meeting. And that is about it for me, there's a lot going on right now, so we're uh and finance meeting is coming on, so we'll be, we'll be a busy group. So now we're gonna open it up to the gallery, so we have fifteen minutes, so go ahead, Kelly.
Let me say no new characters again. Uh to the chair. Um so it came up regarding Eagle Valley Rescue and the fire department. And I just wanted to make sure that there was a little bit of clarity of what's been happening the last six months. Um I'm gonna read some of my script because I don't want to deviate. Um because I need to ensure that I'm not conflicted by my passion for the nonprofit organization and the service and that I'm completing my duty as a due diligence as a member of the board and the responsibilities that I carry within. Today, Diane Sutton is also here from the board. So we began our search for something that's happening in the community October, but officially in November twenty twenty three. In January twenty twenty four, I stood in this room at this place um and asked this group of counselors um to entertain the idea of having a home for uh rescue. You saw the vision and you you directed the staff to explore the possibility. Um there were changes within the fire department, which were communicated, uh communicated patiently. And the first time I met with uh Chief Lorenzo, I uh I was pleasantly surprised. It was four days after he got here, I happened to go into the fire hall for a reason. And I came away from that meeting feeling really positive and that there would be a lot of potential and opportunities for our group to be part of fire department. Since since the meeting, we've had some informal and formal uh meetings where we've as uh as the board have asked for cross training, collaboration and services. We've suggested different people to help uh with the transition and areas of knowledge um as well as contacts. And then and we felt that we've made, we've used every opportunity at our disposal to include the friendly integration of fire and rescue and it hasn't really happened. Um there's been a limited communication between fire and ourselves. In fact, the first really meaningful uh um conversation that we've had in those six months was with Bianca, Daryl, um Chief Lorenzo and Diana and I. There's uh there was many things that I had hoped that would happen while we went through various things and I realize he's been busy and we're not the all and all, but in twenty twenty three, our coworkers, Swansea Point had also asked um and indicated that they had an interest in road rescue. And uh the board and crew of the time felt that the best place for road rescue, and there's many of us that still feel that way. This is a community that initiated the service, has been delivering the service for the last thirty years and is passionate about the service. So we part there. for the last thirty years and is passionate about the service. So we part their interest and said, we're working with the district. But when we weren't, when there was no communicating back and forth or any things that are not financial, they need cross-training and things like that. We resurrected as a society, doing our due diligence, um, the possibility of, of joining, um, Swansea Point. There is some interest. Um, the CSRD is looking at changing their model. Um, I have a meeting, Diane and I have a meeting, uh, tomorrow. Hopefully in the morning with, uh, Sean regarding it, but we also spoke to the district and said, you know, and is it awful place for many of our board members and our crew to be in because there's not, um, it's not really, it's not set up and we're still responding to calls that are terribly traumatic. So uh, at our meeting last week, Daryl and Bianca listened. I think, uh, Lorenzo heard some things and they left the door open for us because we appreciate it. Um, I think everybody here understands that it was never about us just handing over the equipment and seventy thousand dollars of, of, um, surplus money or the inventory of the vehicles for the people. It was about becoming a part of, of this community where it's always originated. So we are coming back to the table, I would hope in the next week or two to, once we talk to the CSRD to find out what, um, their intentions are. But there's a real need to do cross-training. I heard Lorenzo say it. When rescue is called out, fire isn't an automatic. Rescue is its own specialty, just this ice and sweat flutter and the rest of that goes. And so I've been asked, um, to kind of identify in our calls, what were the calls? So you're not gonna have rescue come, or pardon me, fire come up to a CPR call. And the best thing that could possibly happen is that SFR said, yeah, let's start training with Swansea Point and Malquart. Because if the service is here and they have to go to those jurisdictions, the fire department in my understanding, and I have to make sure that I, uh, clarify that going in my next meeting. Fire gets to go with them. We take the mutual aid of Malquart to help if we need help at the scene, right? It's not like everybody from Sycamore's goes because it's now road rescue. So it's, it's been frustrating. It's been heartbreaking. Um, and it's, it's been a tremendous amount of work to try and figure out what we're doing. Um, recently, we, you know, I, I don't think it's true, but we may have to look for another place to operate out of because of wanting to put policies and procedures in that domain fire hall. And we'll do whatever we need to do until we find a home for it. But it's, I, I felt that it was necessary to at least advise at this point.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other comments from the gallery? Anyone online, Sarah? Okay. Thanks everyone for being here. We're gonna call this meeting, we're gonna adjourn this meeting at two thirty-three Wednesday, October the twenty-third. Thanks everyone.
Thank you. Boys, that sounds like a rep.
Yeah.